I'm going to call the meeting in order.
You want my last round, uh trustee Williams as Mayor Proton and Mayor Anson here today?
Burges?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Sires? Paskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Can I go with the example of the question? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will check please call him.
Burges? Gordon? Sires? Paskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yeah.
Williams?
Here. Uh before we go to item number two for public comment, I would just ask that if we can take a moment of silence to pay respect to all of our veterans today. Thank you for your service as a happy veterans in the audience. And uh if we go to item number two, public comment, remember that all questions and comments must be directed to the chair. And each speaker will give a brief and honest comment on any topic on which they will care.
I need um accounts payable on the debt issue. I have a question on number one. And it says eight hundred and forty dollars for neighborhood watch book bags. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I would like to believe that donations were uh given and that these are all taken care of from debt. So I don't understand why it doesn't show the donation so that this would look like eight hundred and forty dollars came out of general fund to pay for book bags. I'm not sure whether that's the case or not, but I would like to know why eight hundred and forty dollars is going up to pay for book bags if that was the case. Secondly, I would like to um pay trustee Burges for the awesome uh Veterans Day memorial in the day. I mean uh signaling out of each and every veteran in the room was awesome. It was a great, a great performance. Next, the only question I have is on that eight hundred and forty dollars.
Thanks, what's up, ladies? I can just say um that as far as the eight hundred and forty dollars is returned, the money definitely was not paid by the village. All of the money that was spent on book bags, as I previously, as I previously announced, the night of the book bags was all given by donations. All of the money that was collected from us during the tag day, all of the money that was collected for private and public donations, we had to turn all of that money into Mohan. We deposited it and we wrote a check to the company that we purchased the book bags for. All of the clear book bags that was given, those school sleep supplies, those twelve hundred and something dollars, that's probably where that transition came from. And Mohan is here tonight to verify that. And I also want to say while I'm speaking on that, that the Neighborhood Watch is extremely transparent. There has never been a program where we have raised money, where I have not publicly announced how much we raised, how we raised it, and I also made a public declaration that all money is returned in. Even our video that we gave the package into the prime office and they put that money on the line item for Neighborhood Watch. And this all turned over to Mohan and Neighborhood Watch have every receipt for every dime of money that we have collected. Thank you.
Mahal, Mahal, would you have anything to add?
Nothing. Mahal collected, he put into Neighborhood Watch program. Exactly whatever he has spent, he has as much money in bank. So instead of creating a check, we use the village credit card in favor.
There is students, all the others.
Uh a question on pockets. Uh I was here last because I didn't come one week and um the pockets of the director state that were broke. Um I wonder how is that possible? How long are we going to be broke? And when is it going to be announced by the board? Because I think that's where it should have came from. Instead of coming from offside, our board and our mayor. You know, and I'm looking forward to that to come up in the evening. I'd like to hear more status from the board and the mayor on our revenue status at these meetings, talking about the numbers at length, what we're spending, what we have come in. I need it more transparent where maybe we don't understand it as he has stated, but make it clear to them. Thank you.
I will make that recommendation to the mayor.
Thank you.
Any other question? I just want, want a simple question. Uh I was at uh last night's meeting, everybody else was, was, was everybody just driving around and all that? I have a, I have a little problem around, around my block. Uh because I have, I have two stop signs uh around my, right by my house and I've seen cars just going through stop signs and I've seen kids getting off the bus from, from school. And I can see, I can not, not see a car uh come by.
We do need to make sure that all questions are on the agenda, but what I would suggest is that if you, trustee Washington, wants to get together after the meeting and discuss that, our police chief is not here tonight, but I will pass those concerns on to him as well.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Saying that, moving on, um number three reports of officers. Mayor's report, I was not officer report tonight, so moving on. Um the judge clerk, we study lawyers.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. There's quite a few things on the back table today relating to information of what's going on in Sawville Village. We have a lot of panic committees right now and a lot going on in and around Sawville Village. Most importantly tomorrow, there's a public meeting at Illinois, for the Illinois Route 394 and Illinois Route 1 corridor study. It's being held at Bellmore Racetrack at, from four to seven P M. And there's presentations at four thirty and six P M. This is a public meeting, I think it's the second public meeting we had. There's going to be some big changes to 394 coming up soon. I also put the village calendar out on the back table and I just want to let you know now that there's a safe half to twelve. It says here three P M and six P M, it should say four thirty and six P M. I will be making that correction online tonight, but if you picked up the village calendar back there tonight, please make that change. The presentations are at four thirty and six P M at Bellmore Racetrack at 26435 South Dixie Highway in Crete, Illinois. The village calendar is on the back table and online and has been updated as far as I know. If any committees or any um, or members have any changes to the November calendar and the December calendar, I'd like trying to get those all out, including the holidays. If anybody has any changes, would you please let me know as soon as possible? I also wanted to remind people that what's happening in Saw Village is on the back table. There's a lot of events coming up in November and December, particularly because of the holiday. And one of the most recent events coming up is the Second Annual Saw Village Resource Fair that's taking place on Thursday, November twentieth. This has turned out to be quite a big event and I can, I can only ask that people take, I made extra flyers back there. Part of the problem that we're having lately is people saying, well, if I didn't know, I wouldn't come. Or I didn't know that was happening. I've done some by everything I can to get word out. We have a new Saw Village Information Place one page. We have a e-glass system. We have board meetings, they're posted in the hallways, we have a website. But I don't know what's happened to the old days where people just pick up the phone and talk to each other. There's a lot of resources on November twentieth that I would appreciate if everybody would pick up a flyer. There's going to be National Housing Services going to be here realizing the American dream, receive information about the home buying process and learn how to make quality up for up to thirty-two thousand dollars in assistance. This is nature. Have Ed's Smart Ideas Energy Efficient Program will be here to offer tips, tools, and rebates to help you save money and energy. You can't pay for better healthcare, what benefits are you eligible for? You can make an appointment for free assistance for open enrollment on Medicaid or the Affordable Care Act. The open enrollment here is November fifteenth through February fifteenth. They're going to start coming to the village, maybe on a weekly basis, to help enroll people. We have Village Woods coming out from three P M to five P M regarding assisted living and senior day club. We have Boom Township comes out every Thursday from eleven to one to help people with counseling, assistance with facilities, resume writing, moving to pet pantry, pet pantry applications. These things are all going on in Saw Village and the shame of it is a lot of people just don't know. We have Uber transportation, we have pace transportation, and from six to eight P M on the twentieth, we have free food shots from Walgreens. So I really think that when we have events in the village, it's got to be more about what we're offering to people than less about who's putting it on or what committee's doing it. And we really need to start talking to each other as a community to make sure everybody's aware of what's available to us because our residents need this information. So if there's a lot of flyers back there, please take a few, cast them around, leave a phone call, and encourage other people to participate because there's a lot of people coming from outside Saw Village on the twentieth. As well as, I think these other times we have events, people come from outside the village to come to us to bring us resources. The best we can do is to be here with them and show them that we want these resources because that will bring us more resources. So if anybody has any questions about anything that's on the back table, my phone number is on just about everything I do. And I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Item number C, Village President. Um item number E, Village Attorney.
Thank you, number four.
Item number E, Village Engineer, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Regarding the MRT project, the two thousand fourteen recycling project, if it's fully completed, Mayor Robinson will be directing payment for that. And planning for the two thousand fifteen MRT CDP project is underway. Regarding the water treatment plant improvements project, well three, I'm happy to announce is fully operational and supplying water to the system. And work at wells one and two will commence soon. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Um number four, reports of trustees and board committees. Item A, Parks and Parks Committee, trustee passing.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. First, I'd like to say that the crash opened hand last Saturday, we had a very good success. We had seven hundred people come out, purchase things, we had several dealers, all the dealers were happy. And the uh, I did put out a letter to each of the uh staff people to ask them what they thought went right, what went wrong. And I had excellent, you know, good timing, uh things like that. My only two downs were uh the map wasn't important, it said it was too remote and it was cold. Student sentiment of the pandemic was cold. Seattle will be here on six for his parade, uh so we'll be having that starting at ten o'clock on Saturday, December sixth. So we'll be starting to put up the Christmas trees in the community center on November twenty-seventh right after Thanksgiving. So if anybody has some time, they'd like to help put up some trees, get in touch with me and we'll make some time. Uh the plan is that the kindergarten, the first grade and language will be providing these decorations. The uh principal promised me that she'd have that done, so I have to go back and check with her another week or two to make sure that we have the right decorations. Also, I'd like to say, uh thank you to Derek for your wonderful show. Our, our thing, people out this morning for our veterans, it was a great time, I was here and we welcomed them. Thank you very much. My name is Mayor Proton.
Item B, I'm going to skip because I don't have a report to that. Item C, I'm going to skip because trustee Myers is not meeting with us yet. Um item D, in the Governmental Relations Committee, trustee Burges.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I just want to say right quick, uh I did appreciate the veterans that came out to ask this morning and um we did, as, as was spoken, was stated a few minutes ago, we did recognize them, but I see there's some here today, is that this evening, so if they would possibly stand, all the veterans that are in the room right now, would you please stand up? Thank you. I just wanted everyone to see, uh because some of them didn't make it out this morning. I'd just like to say thanks to all those that did, thanks to all those participated this morning. Uh I really enjoyed it and I'm sure, sure the people that were there enjoyed it too, so um I just want to say, I appreciate all of you, work that you've done for the veterans, for us, for our, for our our city, our state, our continent, everything that you do to the sacrifice so we can have a better life. I'd like to say thank you very much. Next, we didn't have a meeting this month for in the government relations. We're not going to have one in December because of the holidays, so the next in the government will be in January. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Item E, item number Washington, trustee Washington.
Thank you, trustee, please. First of all, I just want to say I want to thank the committees coming out to our Neighborhood Watch, our regular schedule. We had last night at the fire station, it was absolutely wonderful. We had a row full of people, we had new block club captains that came and they uh signed up to be block club captains in their area. Also, before we have our meetings that start at seven, now at six thirty, we have a pre-meeting where people can actually talk and then engage in conversation about things that's happening on their block. That turned out to be a great success and an eye opener as well. I just want to encourage anyone in the room, if you'd like to be a block club captain, but you would want your block that you think would be a good block club captain, if you would have any good contractors to meet here at the block hall or any other block club captain that they may know. Our meeting that will be happening in December will be our last thing, of course, of the year. It's going to be on Monday, December the eighth, and we're also going to have a Christmas party at that block club meeting for the block club captains and their guests. So if you are a block club captain and you're here tonight and you did not make the Neighborhood Watch meeting last night, we will be having our Christmas party on our next meeting, which will be December the eighth at the fire station. There will be a potluck and that's the food I reported at this time. Thank you.
Item F, Public Relations Meeting, Average Partnership Committee. For Public Relations Committee, we will be meeting as a committee to discuss student government day and the upcoming changes in the schedule. As I reported two weeks ago, the testing for District 168 has changed, which means the schedule that we normally have for student government day has to change with that. So student government day is usually held in final Tuesday in the month of March. We're unable to do that this year, this upcoming year, so we will be looking at our schedule and deciding where the student government day celebration is going to be happening and what the board meeting is going to happen. So we'll make sure to keep everybody updated on that. For Community Outreach Partnerships, there will be no meeting for the month of November at this time due to scheduling conflicts, so um if that changes, I'll be sure to let the committee know. And item number five, reports of the primary committees and commissions. Higher Department, number one commission, Chief Tomrey.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Over the past two weeks, fire department responded nineteen calls, two brush fires, believe it or not, six vehicle accidents, two fire alarms, four medical assists, two possible structural fires, two vehicle fires. And with that, folks, we started walking into the building tonight with the general temperature change. So I think it's fair, we'll be prepared. Get a chance, don't forget, we should have known the batteries and the phone exactly to see all arms.
Chief, who was in line here today? Um item C, Public Works Partnership.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Proton. Uh a few items. Each week being, we love picking, the last sweep of the year, we'll, we'll follow behind the leaf program. So if you're wondering when to come back out, we're out of the sweep right now. After that, we'll follow any ones we're out of the hotel, so probably have to go to the seventh, first week of December. Uh trees, we're addressing residential complaints due to windstorm at this point. And sometime in December, the first week or second week of December, we will also start to cut down the ash trees. And um at the request of any resident at the location where the ash trees are coming down, they can request the logs from the trees. They can be used for firewood or you can throw away if you want. If you wish to have a log, we will leave them. If you don't, we will take them away at least after a week's time of leaving them. Um streetlights ongoing. Currently, we have a wire fall we're working on in 219 Place Jeffrey. We've had a little uh scheduling change, so we'll be behind on that. But all we have is breaker in place and that wire fall should be taken care of. Pothole patching, uh we're working on the plan areas and it'll be ongoing through the next month and a half. Hopefully we're patching up the roads for wear time. Uh customer service, uh we have a customer service rep that goes around every day, gets scheduled appointments. Any residents who have any water complaints, uh in their household for any reason involved, you can schedule a tour talk to have this individual come out to your house and check out the house. Do you need to help with information you can and answer any questions you may have about the water. Fire alarms, uh recently we're discussing about replacements. We had one replaced higher than at this time and one that's pending. And one that was replaced is two twenty-six oh nine Berwood. And one that is um has an open hole at this point and we had a little scheduling problem, so uh two two five, two one, two point fifth place, that one currently is uh in the works right now. Um recently also this time of year, with the leaf program, the leaves um dropping in the roadway and us asking residents to put them on there. We do have some issues with flooding streets and rain events, so we will see Public Works out cleaning off manholes. And they may leave the, the leaves up in the parkway at this time because we'll be around the leaf program to pick them up. Normally during any of the pickup, they will take the debris off the manholes and take it with them. Facility work recently, we've had a bunch of lights out in this building. We've had a little bit of A F A work at the police department. And as you can see on the parking lot, we can seal voting and restructure the parking lot. Uh the final step on the parking lot here would be the handicap locations, but there are signs posted, so please obey them. Thank you. Uh the leaf program did start earlier than that. Um we are starting in sections uh on Thursday first, from Monday through Friday. All leaves must be out by the twenty-third, which is the Sunday. And once we come by after that, we will be done and we will not come back. And if you left in recovery, unfortunately, we'll have to turn that over to code enforcement. Weather preparedness, uh I said in the past, we're trying to get our trucks ready with the gauge of our vehicle for this time. We do have some more repairs that haven't been done, some well repairs, some supply repairs ongoing at this point. And so far, so good. And uh from October thirty-first, probably the worst day of the year so far this year for us. We had basically a blizzard, we had cold weather conditions, and we had a, a pretty good sized water main break, which led for the rest of the week, a week straight, to, to a current, to a total of six water main breaks and two empty water repairs. Not greatly related to the water mains, but all of a sudden at one time it forced. But all have been taken care of, all the boilers that were posted were lifted, and all residents that were affected were, were known. And that concludes my report.
Administrative Services Director, Vice Dusinski.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Just a few items, um I'd like to give you an update. Sturk's parking lot lights have been repaired. I went through the parking lot myself tonight before the meeting. He hired somebody to do that. He's eventually going to put them lights on at dusk, they're done at the time, so they don't, you know, mess up again. Trustee, um Washington, um you talked about that was monitoring and it broke the front door. The management stated that it is in all tenants leases that they're responsible for any repairs to the buildings. He was going to send um his door guy out there to see if it could be fixed. Um I have no bad opinion, but it is their responsibility. The advanced auto sign has electric problems, so the pole sign is um out currently with a grime sign. And we sent letters to all the businesses that had cars in the parking lots that were for sale. And um we had a good percentage of them removed, and the ones that are still there, we're going to start taking them. And that concludes my report.
Item Sturker, Mr. Robb.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I have no report.
Sawville Cholmonn Security, Security Agency, Director Passon.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. In the last two weeks, we responded to plenty of laws, one struck the fire, seven vehicle accidents, two fire alarms, uh traffic light pain uh in the roadway, two brush fires, four patrol patrols, one assist somebody at the scene, one patrol alarm, one possible spark fire. Just a reminder, this is Aima, what, what uh National Services Group, I thought it was called. They look for one of the persons guide, their phones, one of the other turns, and says, we're staying safe at home in your car, that's for that is available on the Elliot Illinois website. At www dot ready dot alway dot gov or by calling two one seven seven eight five nine nine two five. And all the laws passes information out to the village board, so she can provide any advice. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Human Relations Commission, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I just want to say that the Human Relations Commission meets the first Monday of every month. Our next Monday will be Monday, December the first. It's right here at the village hall, we are asking for visitors to come and to give us any information on diversity in the community. If you have any ideas or any appropriate that you would like to see for the Human Relations Commission to be a part of in conjunction with, uh the vice president of our commission is here tonight, Commissioner Frank Williams. Raise your hand, in case anyone knows who you are. You can see him at the end of the meeting and he'll let you know what the Human Relations Commission has in store next. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Housing Commission, Commissioner Gary Holcomb.
I have to report.
Senior Committee Chair, Professor Lois Henson.
Thank you. I'll make it real brief. Uh I just want to let you know that leisure timer meets uh tomorrow, four P M at the Slappy Joe Dinner. I thought um the calendar needs to remove eleven twenty-sixth. They do not be uh last Thursday in November. And also um this coming Friday is our Open Senior Activity Day. And I believe there uh they've got flyers going out inviting all seniors to attend. And also our Silver Sneaker that's on Tuesday, that's going real well to ten o'clock uh in the senior center. I do want to thank Public Works for some of the help they have given us. And we're waiting when they're able to uh fix some of the chairs. And um just a reminder that December seventh is the last day of open enrollment if you need to change or apply for Medicare. And our next senior committee meeting is Thursday, November thirteenth at five P M. That'll be our last meeting for the year. Thank you, Ms. Shunzhang.
Item number six, New Business Emotional Group accounts payable on this first month from October twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen through November eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Can we have a motion approved?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second, is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, can I approach this call?
Burges?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Sires?
Paskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Okay, motion approved. Item number seven, this latest comments and questions from the board. What's the board?
Thank you. I just want to report on something. Today, I went to the customer managers' transport facility. Had a couple of updates. Updating some road projects that will be coming to our surrounding area. Illinois 394 and Saw Trail, the target date to start with that is going to be 2015. Saw Trail East going, I'm sorry. Saw Trail East of Torrance Avenue to US 30, we're doing a resourcing project. Target is 2017. Saw Trail at Berlin Avenue, we're going to be putting in a left turn lane. Target date is 2017. And the big one from Berlin Avenue to the Indiana State Line, the target, target date for that is 2017 as well. Metro will be doing a 2015 budget increase in their fares. And it's going to go up 10.8% if you do have the increase in the vote to be. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Pastor Thompson?
Uh, just wanted to start, just wanted to start. Just wanted to scream, we are going to have all signups on the 21st of November at the community center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We sit there taking that, any, any young medical officers or any young people who want to sign up for the basketball program. There will be busy hours, there will be no candy sales, there will be no uniforms. And it will be from age of seven to 14. That's all I have.
Pastor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Voltaire. We just want to reiterate that we have been pushing our No Bullying campaign this year. We have also been pushing our No Texting While Driving campaign. We have several pledges that have been signed by young people as well as the No Texting While Driving. And that pledge, we informed the residents that if they signed the pledge for No Bullying or for No Texting, we were going to post their names on the festival bill along with giving them a certificate. We're going to be winding that up for this year in about two more weeks. So if you have not yet signed the pledge for No Texting While Driving, or you know some young people and possibly some adults that want to sign the No Bullying pledge, you can sign that pledge, get it submitted. We're going to be posting those names by the end of the year. That is our desire as the extension from the neighborhood watch. Also, both the deputy registers, as you know, your commission is going to be expiring on November 30th. If you want to register people to vote, we're going to be hosting a deputy register class at the community center on December the 6th, on Thursday. On Thursday, December the 6th, so you don't have to pay.
So December 6th?
So you're allowed that.
Sounds like what's happening in Saw Village.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On Thursday, December the 11th, if you are a deputy register, your license will expire on November 30th. We're going to have a class at the community center, it's free, it doesn't cost anything. You can come with two pieces of IDs, one piece of ID, and either a piece of mail from your house. You can take the class, you can take the oath, you can leave out that day and go and begin to register people to vote anywhere in the state of Illinois to David Orr's office. If you have any questions about being a deputy registrar, you can see me after, after the service. You can see me after this meeting tonight. If you feel a bit of deputy registrar and you'd like to be one, you can see me. I happen to have your name to turn me into Cook County David Orr's office. They will have a package for you on that day. You can be a deputy registrar and that is a very nice thing to be. And in conclusion, I just want to reiterate, we are having our Christmas party. If you are not a block club captain, but if you have helped the neighborhood watch either with the signs or with the book bags, and you helped to pass our little trick any kind of way, we'd like to invite you to come to our Christmas party at the fire station during our regular meeting on December the 8th at 6:30. And it is a potluck, and that includes our report. Thank you.
Did you hear the time for the thing, December 11th?
December the 11th for our deputy registrar. The deputy registrar starts at 6:30. The doors will open at 6:30 and there will also be people from other communities that are going to come over here because they want to be a deputy registrar.
Okay, thank you. Pastor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Voltaire. I just wanted to announce and just reiterate, next Wednesday, that's a week from tomorrow, we will have our town hall meeting here. It'll be here at this time from 7:00 to 8:30. There'll be some communications sent out. And Madam President, I will be emailing you the e-glass, I'll put it in the email.
It's already coming?
It's already on there, so this is okay. And also, I've missed, I forgot to, I know I did say ask all the veterans to stand, but I wanted everyone to kind of, after the meeting tonight, kind of get, or, you know, talk to your veterans that did stand. And also, there is one person here that, I don't know about anyone else, but I never met a general or anyone, as far as I think I've met someone was a major. I did not know this, this particular person was a lieutenant colonel. I know he was served a lot, he was serving on different tours of duty. But now he's in the back room there, and he stood up, he's going to give you for this too. I didn't see that he was there, but he's right there in the back of the room. It's Cecil Tate, he's a lieutenant colonel, somebody that he's. But after the meeting, he was kind of busy, kind of go him and ask him, I'm sure he's got other things to say. He's been in these services, I understand, he said earlier today, 37 years, that's a long time to serve. That's a very long time to serve. And he still has his wits about him. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Hi, so item number eight, I ask for motion for adjournment.
Second.
Almost a factor, say aye?
Aye.
If she cares, we'll give her adjournment.
If you want to be a deputy registrar, you can leave in your name.